Board of Education for District 208. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Ms. Nardi, do you have a roll call?
Here.
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 Mr. Novak.
Here.
Here.
Do we have recognitions this evening? Dr. Freitas.
Madam President, we have many recognition of many well-deserving adults and students Seven teachers of RB have leadership roles within the College Board AP Exams Division, such as readers, table readers, question leaders, and co-chairs of the department. These teachers are Dan Bonarigo, Sandy Chaika, Delaney Garrity, Melissa Gordon, Blair Jensen, Lindsay Minow, and Dan O'Rourke. An AP exam leadership role promotes professional development and increased knowledge of the ins and outs of their respective exam. We would like to welcome up Ms. Sandy Chaika.
Mr. Freitas, while each of our faculty members come up, can you, can we give them a few minutes to kind of let us know what your project or your area was? If you don't mind?
Sure.
I mean, these are huge, huge accomplishments, and I don't want to just run them off in a list.
I appreciate that. So I work mostly with AP Computer Science A, which is the exam that's all in Java. I also do some work with AP Computer Science Principles. In Principles, I'm a consultant, so I train teachers around the world. I've trained them here and in other countries like Singapore and Dubai. For CSA, I am, I was on the Development Committee for seven years as a member, a co-chair, and then as the College Board Advisor. And then I've been a reader, as well as a table leader, a question leader, and an exam leader. So I've actually helped to write the exam. I still help to write the exam. I write questions and give them the first drafts, and the now Development Committee works with them. When I was on the Development Committee, we finalized the exams. At the readings, I helped to come up with the rubrics and then train the readers so that they are ready to grade all of our wonderful students equitably and consistently as best that we can. So it's really been quite fun. I'm also now serving on the AI, generative AI Committee with the Vice, Executive Vice President of the College Board, Trevor Packer, to look at how AI is affecting education and what we need to be doing, how to move not only the AP exams but education in general.
Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Chikis.
It's like, how do you have time to do this? That's amazing.
I do a little bit of everything. You know, you just, you just got to go and keep focused and not think too much about it.
Thank you.
The next teacher we would like to recognize is Ms. Melissa Gordon? Ms. Gordon? Thank you, Freitas, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you.
Ms. Gordon, any words about the work you do with the College Board?
So I'm a, I've been a reader and a table leader for AP Calculus. So depending on the year, I can get questions for either A, calculus AB, or calculus BC. And so I, readers, we just go in and we follow the rubrics that the leaders have created, grade us consistently, try to keep everyone grading the same. And then when I was a table leader, I was in charge of a group of readers and double-checking, back-reading, making sure that they were grading consistently and following the rubrics as they should.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you.
We would like to recognize now Ms. Lindsay Minow. Ms. Minow? Thank you, Freitas, Ms. Minow. Ms. Minow, a few words about the great work you do?
I have not done as much as Mrs. Gordon and Ms. Chaika, but I am a reader for AP Stats, and I think this was my seventh or eighth year doing it. So during that time, I was one of the people that, you know, our table leaders and question leaders trained to grade consistently according to the rubric, as they tell you over and over a hundred times a day, over the eight days that we grade.
Thank you very much.
I haven't ever seen a third teacher in a red and black plaid, so I'm a little disappointed at the two of them.
I didn't know it was a math teacher matching moment.
The following teacher has helped bring the Open Educational Research World History Project to RB as its core world history curriculum. The OER Project helps prepare students for college, career, and AP history exam and is entirely online and free. Ms. Erin Cunningham serves as the teacher leader in the OER Project teacher community. She helps actively develop the curriculum for teachers worldwide and provides feedback and examples of how she engages her students in the classroom. Ms. Cunningham has attended summers where she collaborates with teachers, hosts AP writing workshops, and consistently reviews the OER world history curriculum to serve her students best. Let's get it off for Ms. Erin Cunningham. Ms. Cunningham? Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Cunningham, any words about the great work you're doing?
I think you kind of covered it. Yeah, working with the OER Project has really transformed my teaching career, and it's brought me into contact with teachers from all over the United States and all over the world. And, you know, being able to collaborate online with people and being able to say, hey, I'm doing this in my classroom, and then someone in New York is like, yeah, me too. It's been really, really great to have that sort of camaraderie and collaboration across the world. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's just OER Stanford. It's Open Educational Resource.
The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, PAEMST, are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government for K-12 STEM teaching, with up to 108 teachers awarded each year. RB teacher, science teacher, Ms. Michelle Kaler, is one of the three Illinois finalists. Ms. Kaler? Ms. Kaler, a few words about the great work you've done as a science educator?
So Presidential, you have to get nominated for it. I don't really know who nominated me. I received an email at one point offering the opportunity to fill out the application. It highlights you as an educator in the classroom as well as a leader in your field. And so it's not only about what you do in the classroom, it is professional development that you go about, how you work with other teachers. And so I had to not only record myself with my students on a lesson, talk about some of the different challenges that I face in the classroom and different ways that I teach. I like to really involve a lot of inquiry and case studies in the classroom, and then also highlight the curriculum writing that I do for pre-AP Bio for College Board, as well as I write science curriculum for a company called HHMI Bio Interactive and present with them.
Ms. Fletcher, take a rouge hat for positive pride?
Yes.
And today was flannel shirt day, right?
It was.
That was not just a, ah, true.
That was, that was the dressing day.
Because I'm looking at other people going, wow, there's a lot of flannel in this room.
Congratulations to the RB students who were awarded the National Recognition from the College Board. These students earned this academic honor because of their GPA of three point five or higher and outstanding performance on the AP exams. Students were awarded with the National African American Recognition Award and the National Hispanic Recognition Award. These students are Elizabeth Buchanan, Joseph Buckles, Catherine de Jesus, Patrick Hart, Isabel Hernandez, Mesayel Herrera Mendoza, and Mariah Watkins Sanders. Bull Docks, if you have any names, please come on up, right? Come on up, come on up, Bull Docks.
Oh, wait, let's see. Dr. Freitas, who's who, so we could just, if we call them, what would you do?
So this is Mariah?
Congratulations, Mariah.
Elizabeth, are you?
Oh, yeah.
Elizabeth? Congratulations, superstar.
Congratulations.
Joseph? Joseph. Mesayel Herrera Mendoza, Mesayel? Really proud of you. And last but not least, Patrick Hart. Come on, Patrick. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Let's do the photo.
And that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas and team. Do we have any visitor's statements this evening? Any visitor's four statements?
I say we'll call you in one second. I say we'll call you.
Not quite, S. I'm looking, do we see any visitors? I see a.
Yes, no?
Okay. I don't see any visitor's statements this evening. Everyone can leave, will take SA out of order so they can move on with their evening. The Student Association, he's going to come on. And we'll circle back and do the district goal update.
Hello, we're so happy that you guys could have us here tonight. We really appreciate it. My name's Emily Hernandez. I am the president of the Exec Board, and I'm a senior.
I'm Ella Ventura. I'm the vice president of the Exec Board, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Hazel Hall. I'm the treasurer, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Naomi Gallus. I'm the secretary, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Lucy Dren. I'm the director of communications, and I'm a junior.
We are missing one. Alex Jacobs, he's a senior, and he is our student spokesperson. He couldn't be here tonight. He had water pull-up practice. So we are really excited for a good year. We started off our year with freshman orientation, where we had over 70 volunteers, all recruited by SA members, to come and help. And these volunteers were split up into 15 different groups, where they led tours, they kind of showed the incoming freshmen what a day in the life would look like, and they answered all of their questions. Unfortunately, this year had a surprisingly low attendance rate, which kind of surprised us considering the fact that we sent out like save the dates during our future Bulldog Night back in January. We will do that again this year. Hopefully, we have better attendance next year. But other than that, it was really successful. And all the freshmen who did come were able to connect with their group leaders, learn more about all the activities we have here, and get hyped for a new year.
So that kind of leads us to our current week, which is Homecoming Week. Everyone loves Homecoming Week. So our theme is All Roads Lead to Homecoming, which is based around a road trip. Our Spirit Week is based off of different stops. So our stops are Miami, Denver, the Hamptons, Nashville, Texas, and then we're ending the week back at home with RB Spirit Ware. We have a lot of activities going on this week, such as Penny Pinch, the pep rally, and our Homecoming royalty. So we're continuing what we did last year with the Homecoming royalty instead of King and Queen. And then our Penny Pinch is going to Shriners Children's Hospital in honor of Sofia Dominguez, who was a senior at RB. So, yeah, we're donating to Shriners. That helped her with her recovery from an incident that happened last school year. Along with Penny Pinch and the other activities, we are getting a lot of support from other clubs, such as Girl Up, and RBTV has been helping us a lot. We have a lot of fun stuff happening with RBTV. And along with clubs, we've also been getting a lot of support from administration with help with the DJ, the door decorating competition, and a lot of all-school reminds that are being sent out. And Homecoming has been a very big success so far, and we are all very excited about it. So after all that chaos of Homecoming and the first couple weeks of school dies down, we plan to start right away on our community outreach, fundraisers, blood drives, all that kind of stuff. So every year, we do our annual drives, collections. So a quick timeline, we're going to start working on our first blood drive of the year in November. And then additionally, we're going to be collecting and writing cards to the troops for Veterans Day or early in November as well. And then shortly after that, we'll be in full swing for the holidays, so we'll be doing our Thanksgiving basket drive to, I believe, on CSS, and then also our coat blanket drive.
That's all we have today. Thank you for your time. We're looking forward to a really good year. And does anyone have any questions?
Not seeing any, but you guys are off to a great start, so thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
So let's circle back to our discussion item on the district goals update. Dr. Skinkis?
Included in your board packet is the summary chart. The administration has been putting in bold things that are in progress, or if they're completed. There was a question submitted, not many questions. I believe it was dealing with the SMART goal related to teaching and learning. Explore and maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor, new opportunities, and social emotional supports. The SMART goal for this year is step two of the panorama, implement the dashboard to track students' social emotional learning data as well as their college and career readiness. And that goal that was submitted, Dr. Freitas, can you address that for number four? In regards to other, number five, excuse me, is there anything we can find out in relation to goal number, the academic goal in relation to, are we doing things strictly for the intervention classes or honors and AP classes?
So here are the board goal number four. Yes, Dr. Skinkis?
Number one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, board goal one, I think it's like the third task or third step.
Yeah, so on the teaching and learning, here's some of the classroom impacts from last year. Yes, Dr. Skinkis?
No, that's the wrong one. Number one is the, Ms. Lindquist, you wanted to speak on that? What about, is there?
Here, I can rephrase my question if it will help.
If we can clarify, because I don't think we know what you're talking about.
This was my question. So this is, the board goal is explore how to maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor, new opportunities, and social emotional supports for all students. So looking at the action steps that are laid out for the 23, 24 school year, I think they're excellent. We've looked at them. They certainly support that goal. My question is specifically on the third step down, if you will, utilize the implementation, integration of data from school links, panorama, to identify students with potential and proclivity toward dual credit and dual enrollment opportunities. My question was, can we also use panorama or any of those data points to support students who we can, you know, suggest go into the AP track or honors level classes?
We haven't used it in that way yet. However, I mean, we're more than open to explore that opportunity, but we haven't used it in that way, Madam President.
And the reason I brought it up is I was reading through these, and again, I think they're really good steps, but I want to make sure that we're looking at the whole spectrum of students. And if we have data that we could be using to support that cadre, I would think it would be a positive.
Some of the dual credit are AP. Computer Science and Stats are dual credit. They're AP. So there's a little bit of that, but I'd get you wanting to do more.
We get a report directly from College Board that is an AP potential report. So when we are looking at identifying students with that proclivity toward AP and honors, that's something that just very easily is pulled from College Board, so it's already a report in and of itself.
So it's not a separate panorama?
Right, so it's not like a separate panorama, you know, drive down type of thing. We haven't, I would say, we haven't necessarily explored how to best utilize panorama for that, like, dual credit, dual enrollment, proclivity yet, because that really, we want to be able to stress that those opportunities are good for anyone in terms of what your passions are, what you might be interested in. So I think before we would do that, we would need to identify for ourselves as a school, what are the markers, right, that we think best go into those areas? And then we could, I think, expand it to include that if we had kind of in our heads or if we wrapped our minds around what is the profile of that student that we're looking for.
I mean, you see the question I'm asking, right? I want to make sure that we're not losing.
Yes, 100%. Yes, that we're not just focusing on the intervention aspect, but that we're looking at how can we use that tool to reach all of our students and really identify what's best for all of our students. And I think that's definitely, the intervention side, I think, was first, because it's most urgent, and we have some other ways that we have kind of popped into student potential in other areas. But I think as we go through this and are more and more used to the programs, then we can see what their capacity is and be able to tweak it to fit our needs. But we have mechanisms at least in place that identify that AP honors level student based on PSAT scores, you know, throughout the years, and then junior SAT, because they give us that AP potential is what it's called. It's a trademark from College Board, so we just use that report.
And I would say that AP and honors students have always been identified, so this just brings an equity lens to it, because now everyone is given an opportunity to take not just regular courses. So that's how I took it, right? AP and honors students are, they've always been fine, they're going to be fine. It's everyone else who, let's give everyone else a chance.
But I think there's some concern about how to identify students that maybe weren't slated for AP or honors as freshmen. We want to encourage them and not limit your AP honors enrollment just because you
did well in junior high. Right, it took you a while to come into your own, so maybe you had a run through junior high.
Yeah, that's the, that's the group I was looking at.
Identify kids who didn't self-identify themselves.
And I do think RB does a, I think with some of our open access courses, you know, I'm thinking of Lindsay Minow with AP Statistics, and there are students sitting in AP Statistics who were in Extended Algebra when they came in with us. So I do think we do a nice job of continuing that open access, but we have been trying to use that AP potential with our leadership team and our counseling team to really, because not every kid knows that they're suited for an AP class. They may not have ever even thought that in their wildest dreams. So we let that AP potential really kind of help us there, because then it's tangible. We can say to a student, hey, based on your PSAT 10 scores, it says that you have potential to do really well in these courses, and it breaks it down that specifically, so we can use that information.
And if I can add, you know, we have a great partnership with our teachers, you know, and our counselors, who know student strength and enable his growth, and we trust in their recommendation and expertise as well. So we have great partners in our teachers and counselors.
Okay, thank you. That addressed my concern. And I think, Brian, you had a couple of comments on the goals, too, right?
Yeah, mine was really, it was just kind of from a higher up level, looking at the end goal, or the last segment on goal four. Focus to 2023, 24 school year will be on targeting interventions for students dual credit enrollment, professional development for DEI, ELL resources, communications position, so on. My question is, are we seeing any of this that would be noticed by students in the classroom level? Is this all above? And that's not, that's just really to get an understanding of how that goal is being, or how those particular bullet points are kind of being, I don't know if pushed down is the right term, but being seen, how would students be affected by?
Ms. Montana leads that goal, and so her and I and Dr. Freitas and our cabinet meeting today, the response was, here are some classroom impacts from last year into this year. Peer evaluation, providing opportunities for teachers to observe other teachers through additional substitutes, so we're using budget and money to increase the sub-budget so teachers can go and observe and improve teaching and learning. Blended learning, we've increased the number of teachers now, and providing the number of teachers that are receiving professional development, classroom furniture, resources needed to implement blended learning in their classroom. Mathematics and reading, we provide star testing for freshmen through juniors, and interventions for those students below benchmark. We implemented a few sections of an intervention teacher this year. Panorama, which is goal number one, but we provided the STL assessment for all students to determine any behavioral social interventions, and then new instruments were purchased for all the music, not all the music students, for music students. From this year, we're continuing the interventions above. EL intervention, so a courses for math, science, and the overall coordination program interventions for ELL, which was an additional .6 FTE. Dual credit, so we're covering course fees and providing transportation for students to take dual credit at right, dual credit dual enrollment at right, and then classroom furniture, again, dependent on teachers instructional strategies. Those are the different things that we've done that have impacted teaching.
And I think there's some overlap with what was answered for the question on goal one as well, so I would just kind of like to continually hear a little bit more from how that ultimately will end up affecting students, but I think that's a good overview for now.
And goal number five, there's been no updated?
Yeah, that one didn't, I didn't expect that to be necessarily open right now.
Does anyone else have comments on the goals at this point?
I just had a brief, I thought we had kind of headers that had like a general summary of some of the goals, so that one.
So I went back and looked at last year's after we spoke. This is the format what's been used. It hasn't, it hasn't changed.
So when we were in our workshop, though, we kind of had some headers just so that we can kind of refer to them, you know, like, I think we were talking about our, like, our community engagement goal, and we have our new communication person, or definitely to increase our engagement with our stakeholders and everything, which is the beige or mauve goal. So now we're like kind of describing these as the color of the column. But I thought when we were doing the exercise and we were reading down, we were coming to some consensus on what each of these constructs kind of highlighted.
So that blue is teaching and learning, pink is community engagement, green is diversity, equity, inclusion, purple is finance, and orange is facility.
Right, that's.
So you're looking for maybe an etapa cell to put those words in there, so it's?
Kind of. I know that with everything we do, we look at a finance lens. We're not going to, you know, when we're looking at academic programs, again, you have that finance, we're going to be fiscally responsible. It's not to say that each of those constructs are not working with the other goals, but it's a way to talk about them and then make sure that we're addressing all of them.
Does that work for the group to make that amendment?
As far as headings.
Yeah. Any objections? Oh, okay. Can we do that then, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I also think it makes it easy for our community, too, to say, I have an idea for one of these areas, or whatever.
Okay. Any other comments on the goals or the steps? Are we good? Okay. Thank you, everyone. I don't have a report this evening, but I will say that I'm happy to see the school year having, having parent teacher conferences recently and seeing the first few months of the school year. It's exciting, and there's a lot going on here, and it's a great place to be affiliated with, so thank you all. Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of general updates. Thank you to staff and students. They've done a fantastic job, and we have had a great opening to the school year. We're already open through September. Cafeteria and library HVAC replacement project is almost complete. The day the return fans were delivered and installed at 6:23, were delivered at 6:23 this morning on a crane before we had our pickup line start up. They'll be installed the rest of this weekend. That was the last large item on that project punch list. Coffee bar and the student cafeteria is almost complete. Some of the equipment has been delivered and installed. Tentative opening is scheduled for early October. The district has received a lot of positive feedback from stakeholders regarding the efforts being made on the communications front from our new coordinator, Kylie Fletcher, who's here tonight. Kylie is currently working with members of the IT Department in Ed Leo to redesign a webpage. And so thank you for doing that. That was also one of the tasks that was in job description when we posted that position. School board workshop on diversity, equity, and inclusion is on Saturday, October 14th, again via Zoom. I think we have three board members signed up for that. Board members interested participate, email, you need to email me this week. Again, this is, I'm encouraging the board to participate if your schedule permits. This will provide the board with a general overview of the staff's training and the work that is taking place with diversity equity and, including diversity equity leadership teams at RB. Tonight, the board will hear from the four divisionals. This position was negotiated in the current CBA to help support and grow teaching and learning at RB. The divisionals report directly to Ms. Lindquist, the U.P. for Curriculum Instruction, so that will be later tonight in the agenda. Also, this weekend is my superintendent's conference in Springfield. During one of the conference general sessions, I will be presenting on peer evaluation that we have implemented at RB and the positive impact it had on our teacher collaboration and instructional practices in the classroom. So that's exciting news as well. And that's it for the superintendent report.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Thank you. Then are you? Then are you providing the assistant superintendent's report?
I can read that if the board prefers. There were no questions submitted, so just in general.
Do you want to just do a two-minute summary? You can receive it.
Monthly summary report. Total operating revenue for the month was $777,629, which is about 43% come from property tax. Total operating expenditures for the month were $3,311,395, which is 57% for salaries and benefits, 20% for purchase services. Summary of revenue shows the district has received 5.2% of our budget revenue for the year. This percentage is higher than last time, last year, we only had 3.69. Summary of expenditure shows the district has spent 21% of the budget expenditures for the year. This is similar to last fiscal year. The district will continue to deficit spend for the next three months due to the delay in property tax revenue. The administration will continue to monitor fund balances as the current estimate is that the district will need to complete a working cash loan to cover the ad fund in around October or November. Again, we're slated to have a surplus by the end of the year, but again, we're reliant upon the property tax collection and distribution of Cook County. Statement of revenues and expenditure report for August 1st, August 31st, 2023 lists all the revenues expenditure for the month and also compares budget to actual. Student activity account summary report is included in your board packet. Other important facts, 2223 certified staff compensation report and non-certified staff compensation report. The state requires these annual reports to be posted to the district website, so the reports are provided to the board as an FYI in today's packet. And then the transfer enrollment report, this is an annual report, is a follow-up report from the enrollment projections provided to the board in November. The overall projected in-house enrollment was 1653. The actual in-house enrollment is around 1640. So we're off about 13 students.
I think it's remarkably precise, though.
And that is it for the assistant, the assistant superintendent's report.
Before we post, I just had, I did have a question on that supplemental. It's page five of the salary compensation report. Can we just ask Dr. Smetaner to confirm the district paid health for the first individual?
Yes, I have, that's a closed session, I can address that.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure it was not posted until that was reviewed.
Dr. Freitas?
Yes, yeah.
Good evening, honorable board members and Dr. Skinkis. I would like to introduce Ms. Kylie Lindquist, Assistant Principal Curriculum and Instruction, who will introduce our division heads. Ms. Lindquist?
So I am excited to be working under a new leadership structure with four really fantastic teachers who have been leaders inside and outside of our building. And have already, you know, it's not even October 1st, and have already, I would say, positively impacted the way that we view teaching and learning in our district in a variety of ways. So if they come up and join me, Mark Ori is our division head for special education. Mark Helgason is our division head for humanities, which covers English, social studies, and world language. Lindsay Minaw is our division head for STEM, which is our math and science department. And then Kendra Kegel, who is a new teacher here and a new leader here, is the division head for CTE. So she is over our applied arts department, our fine arts department, and our wellness department. And I kind of shared with them that I would like them to just share out something that they have been working on since the beginning of the school year or something that they have been tackling either as a group or individually.
You guys okay standing?
Do you want them to go to the microphone?
Yeah, you can either pull up a chair or.
Yeah. If it's easier to pull up a chair, stay a while.
Don't threaten Mark with a good time, come on over.
We need two chairs.
Two chairs.
Over here with us. Right in the middle.
I would just bring it back around, Dr. Freitas, yeah.
So Mark, if you want to start on that end and then come down.
Hello, everyone, thanks for having us. So we've been really excited this year to get to work as division heads for all of the departments that we support throughout the course of the year. One of the things that we have been focused on is obviously supporting academic goals in the building and also really working hard to collaborate across our departments and rethink how we are implementing and working through PLCs within the district. For example, we're really excited about the possibility of working across departments. Within the humanities division last week, we had English nine teachers working with world history teachers, talking about writing across the curriculum, which was really exciting, as well as some of our junior English teachers who started working together during the summer, you know, had a conversation with one another, continuing those conversations. So, you know, PLC has been a really exciting thing. And I think Lindsay will pick up with some other things that we've been working on.
Before you move on.
Sure.
How does that look different for the students? Like, what's happening at their, their level?
So just the example that I'm sharing, you know, another, for example. For students, working across the divisions means we're able to have richer conversations about the things that are going on within the classroom. In working with world history teachers, we realized we were using different language to talk about writing, for example. You know, we realized in English, we were using one acronym that wasn't the same as in the world history classes that our students, they were, they were using claim evidence reasoning. We were using something else. So that conversation started between, you know, myself and the teacher leader. And then we thought it'd be a good idea to expand it out to both of our departments. So, you know, that's a small example of larger conversations going on that are exciting because we're writing, reading, you know, all of that stuff across the curriculum. It's really then impacting the classroom. We're able to share out our writing practices and then have conversations about it. We, we understand that some of the skills that they're focused on are some of the things that we are also responsible for. But we can also, we also realize we can support each other, you know, through that same, through that common language, I should say.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So also kind of building on that, obviously, you know, humanities, they do, all do a lot of the same skills. They have a lot of writing, they have a lot of reading. Within STEM, one of the big things that's changing for us is that the SAT is going digital. And so working with Mark particularly, we were able to get a lot of information from College Board, but also kind of train our teachers as to how that looks different than what we're currently doing. And so we presented to, as my, you know, the teachers in our divisions, then any other teachers that were interested, so that they would have access to how those changes are being implemented. We've also been able to look at STAR in a little bit more detail, as well as some of our PSAT data and other things on Panorama, so that we are kind of guiding those conversations a little bit more. I can speak specifically, like, when I was in science PLC two weeks ago, perhaps. You know, talking to them about how we would use the STAR data that they don't necessarily have access to, just it's the way it's STAR set up. The math teachers and the English teachers have access to it. But we were able to pull instructional planning and kind of look at, okay, how would this work in a physics class? How, where, where do these skills come in in biology? And kind of have those conversations that it wasn't as easy to have before. And, you know, kind of connecting, making the connections what we have done and building on that, I think is what we've been doing a good job of instead of being like, okay, this is all new, but really recognizing where we were at and using that to kind of build forward.
Hi, I'm Mark Ori, I'm part of the specialized program. And my role really hasn't changed as far as what I'm doing within special education. But I would say this year with PLCs, we've taken a different approach to kind of allowing our staff. This was a push from a lot of the interviews that we had last year to have more time to have these discussions that Lindsay just mentioned. So my department has had a lot of opportunity to have discussions about students and their needs. We have probably six programs within special education, so there's a lot of moving parts. So we've been able to break up into our little small teams, I call them, and have genuine conversations. And some of us are focusing on data collection tools, which are linked to progress monitoring for students with IEPs. So that's been a big push for some of our groups. So a lot of great stuff going on, we're expanding. There's more students, there's more needs. We're, you know, we're looking for, to hire another position. So, you know, it goes back to just providing for the kids and we're getting that time, so it's been great, it's been a great start.
Hello, I'm Kendrick Hagle, I'm the CTE division head. Currently, since I'm new to the building as a teacher and in the leadership role, I'm working really hard to build those relationships with the staff members. Teachers support staff so they know who I am. They also know that I'm here for the right reasons, and that's just to support the teachers. My department is very unique in the fact that it is student-led for the most part and a lot of project-based learning is going on. So there's a lot of things going on at the same time. Currently, I'm working on dual enrollment and dual credit. Tomorrow is a big day for dual credit here at RB. We're registering approximately 85 students, give or take, in dual credit classes for the spring semester. So that's a big thing. Today, I talked with students about dual enrollment and what those will look like for the next school year.
Does anybody want to share, it's okay for Kendra to share, what dual enrollment could look like for next year? We already have, how many students currently?
That I do.
I think there's like eight, maybe, that are taking classes at Triton.
I want to say 11 or 12, I think it is.
And next year, those opportunities for dual enrollment will be expanded?
Yes, so next year, we will have six courses for dual credit, and that will be welding, fire science, EMT, education, criminal justice, and the CNA program, which I believe the CNA program is still currently going on.
Right, so right now, I believe it's welding, CNA, and criminal justice.
Criminal justice, correct.
So they're adding three additional courses at. Three additional courses at Triton, so that we'll have six opportunities for our students to take classes at Triton during the school day, where we help pay for the fees as long as they keep a C average. And we also help with transportation costs. So.
How far are we out for the culinary too? You're bringing culinary too, right?
Well, we're working on developing a kitchen for that.
Yes.
Hopefully, next school year.
Culinary has proven to be our most challenging, our most challenging, I don't know what the word is, pathway to get to that dual credit. When you go through the dual credit process, there's an opportunity for the department chair at Triton or Lowell or COD, whichever school, to provide feedback. And we're still in the kind of back and forth with Chef Manny at Triton. We are working to fulfill all of the, you know, things that he wants us to fulfill. But that is one of the courses that is kind of in queue for hopefully potential dual credit for next year.
Nice. So you, you talk about the PLCs, right? Can you kind of walk us, what's that look like? Is that your, like, weekly meeting together in the group?
Yes, yes.
I think I kind of, but how, how does that like play out then? Because I know, like, there's a late start, right? And so your whole team kind of meets and then?
So it's different.
Okay.
Yeah, it's different weekly. We were actually in a meeting today where we were just kind of planning that out, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, and just to make sure I'm clear, you're asking across all divisions?
Kind of in general, how it works?
Well, unless you're vastly different, then maybe each of you can say how you do it in your group.
Yeah, I mean, we.
For laymen, like, how?
For PLCs, it's professional learning communities, why we have our late start on Thursdays.
Okay.
So it provides the divisionals and teacher leaders time to work with their departments on specific initiatives. So it's like an hour, an additional hour of collaboration and planning. So then you could touch a little bit on what you guys are.
Right, so essentially, we have, we've been developing a menu of options that we can choose from for this year. And, and our goal as, you know, division heads as a team is to be flexible, to be responsive to whatever needs are arising at any given moment. So when the opportunity to provide the full-length practice SAT, the digital practice SAT, came up, we, we explored that and then, and as Lindsay was saying, provided some support through that. We trained our staff on what is going on in the digital SAT, what to expect from it, you know, how we plan to implement it, also had them within PLCs, bring in your Chromebooks, exploring it on their own, so we could be there to support them as they're walking through it. But our menu of options is essentially, we can meet with our whole divisions if we feel that's important. For some of us, for me, for example, I've got roughly 40, some 40 people, I think, in my division. So that's, it's difficult to find a space for that. We have department meetings that we can have, depending on what departments have needs at the moment. We can ask people to work in content teams, work across their content teams. We can meet with individual content teams. Or we can meet across departments and across divisions to have people having conversations across those. And essentially, you know, as Lindsay just said, we, we sat down today at our Tuesday meeting, the four of us, along with Kylie, and kind of mapped out through November and December what we think are going to be the needs as we are anticipating that they're coming up and how we're going to best address those to make sure that we're supporting teachers so teachers can support students, because in the end, that's what it's all about, is making sure that the students' needs are supported in the classroom. Does that answer your question?
So, yeah, so right now, it's looking like you kind of have very similar goals, but you could be working on very different things, right? Depending on your areas.
Kendra's department or division is a great example because when we're talking about English and math and science and those, those core courses that kind of directly link to SAT, we're talking more data review of what's going on in those classrooms. Now, this year, we have found a way to utilize STAR in such a way that I'm able to go in there and pull out skills that the entire sophomore class needs to work on, regardless of what class they're in. And so that is, is an easier way to involve fine arts, wellness, applied arts, because we're able to show what skills all of our kids need and they can integrate those into their courses. But there are times when the applied arts people need to be working on their dual credit applications and the wellness people need to be setting up their fitness grams and the fine arts people might be doing a completely other thing. So Kendra's, the newbie on the team has probably got the biggest challenge for kind of herding all of those cats and getting them all into one place, because they do oftentimes look different. Sometimes for Mark with special ed, he might be inserving, inservicing his whole department on something that's really important for co-teaching or for case management. And then there are other times when he will dispatch his department into their core departments where they're doing their co-teaching. And then he might be with them in, you know, a division meeting with Mark or with Lindsay, just kind of depending on what those needs are.
And I hope to the board that it's clear that we're all working together for students and for teachers. So that's what everyone's doing in their work.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. And the board will like to meet with you again. I think we talked about possibly mid-second semester, so they can get a status update and academic initiatives that started implementing, the PLCs are working on, and things we're starting to plan for already for the following school year, correct? And maybe at that time, we could talk about our progress on the academic goal and your academic dashboard.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Great time to land you.
Thank you.
Dr. Freitas, can I finish up your report?
Yep. Under teaching and learning for the month of September, acknowledging the very same people that are here, the staff, we root the intersectionality of the PSAT and SAT STAR assessment and its focus skills. The goal is to increase the overall percentage of juniors that meet the ERW and math benchmarks. So these are the people that co-created the academic goal. And our goal is to increase the overall percentage of students meeting them. For the month of October, the teaching and learning, October 20th, is institute day. It is a non-attendance day. It'll give us an opportunity for us to work as a building together to develop and grow. Under school culture and operation for the month of September, tomorrow is coffee with the principal at 9:00 a.m. in the faculty cafeteria. In October, October 9th, is Columbus Indigenous People, that is not, that is a non-attendance day. October 19th, it is parent teacher conferences. And we are continuing with the virtual conference. That has been very well received. Our attendance has increased, you know, as far as parent participation. So it's worked very well, you know, for the overall culture of the school. I believe Kylie, it opens up on the 10th. Yeah, scheduling window opens up on October 10th, where families can begin to sign up.
Can they come in person if they don't want to do it online?
Well, there's always an opportunity for parents to schedule anything with a teacher. So that has happened before, you know, on any given day. Our teachers meet with parents, you know, regularly, you know, during their planning period. So there could be an opportunity for parents to meet, you know, with their teachers.
But the overwhelming response from our survey that we could did last year was that parents appreciated the virtual conferences so they can call in from work and not have to take a day off for being in line for the gym.
Yeah, I was just saying, if anybody was uncomfortable, I would just want to know if that, that was an option.
On that day, I don't think it's an option, but they could schedule a separate time.
A separate one.
Correct, yes, not on that day, but on any other day, of course, yeah. In the month of October, just a week ago. month of October, just a week ago, excuse me, I had an opportunity to visit myself or Mr. Mannan and a teacher. We had an opportunity to visit Reviss High School and explore concealed weapon detectors, the CWDs, concealed weapon detector. For those who haven't seen it, it's very similar, but not a metal detector. It is like the 2.0 version. You know, those devices, you know, detect, you know, the size and shape of metal of certain, you know, weapons, et cetera. You know, they don't detect, like, keys and phones and, I mean, it was a great site visit. This is one of many that we have scheduled. You know, right now, we're in the exploratory phase, in the research phase. I could see this at least lasting, you know, throughout the year. You know, I could see them also coming here, presenting to our superintendent, and possibly to staff members. But just so the board knows that we're always exploring ways to increase our safety procedures and processes here at RB.
So Dr. Freitas, that's obviously a big topic. So I even think, at some point in a Friday update, if we could get some background information on where they work and cost, and some of the details as you're going through your process, I think it'd be helpful.
Of course.
General flyers.
Yeah, of course. And I was able to, we have some pictures, we have some videos, you know, that I'll submit to our superintendent, and he will share with you, so you guys can see how they look, you know, there and there. But again, from the visit, it worked great. You know, Reviss is a school of about 1,900, you know, kids. I didn't see any major delays, you know, but, you know, if anything, I mean, kids were coming in, and now beeping, they were being checked and sent right in. But, you know, it's something to explore that we're currently doing right now. Especially thanks to Mr. Mannan and Mr. Petrick for the visit as well. Under activities and athletics for the month of September, on the 25th, which we just had a senior night for girls golf team. In the month of October, on the 3rd, we have senior night for girls volleyball versus Ridgewood at home at 5:30. On the 5th, we have senior night for girls tennis versus Ridgewood at 4:30. October 6th, we have senior night football game versus Thorn Ridge at 7:15 here at our stadium at the Kenley Athletic Complex. We will also be recognizing our cheerleaders, our band members, our POMs, our hip-hop athletes, et cetera. And on the 13th of October, we have senior night for boys soccer versus Kennedy at 5:30 JV and 7:15 varsity here at the Kenley Athletic Complex. And that concludes my principal's report. Now to-
Couple of minor questions that were submitted. I think you corrected some of the date corrections.
Yes, yes, all the dates have been corrected. Excuse me.
I think it's our student advisors. You guys are up.
For the student advisor's report, for teaching and learning on, in September, something a lot of the students have seen is the blended learning reflection. Some successful strategies that we've experienced within our own classrooms, and then we've seen with others, is that providing students with a guideline or an organizer, such as giving them a calendar, letting them know, this and this will be assigned this day, and we will go over it this time, or if not. They also assign us ad puzzles or YouTube videos, and then we have to write down notes for them. But then also reviewing those notes with the students, at least, like, leave some blanks so that you can go over them again with them, so that they can either ask questions that maybe they could have forgotten in that time while watching the video, but also helping them improve, like, communication between the teachers and the students. And then for September, for school and culture and operations, on September 15th, we began the Hispanic Heritage Month with Holas, sponsored as Mr. Vino and Mr. Venegas. Hispanic Heritage Week, Spirit Week, we had Loteria Lunes, Bandera Day, which was bring your jersey, where represent your, your part of Latino America where you feel like is home to you, and then you can also either represent that with a flag or with a jersey of a team. And then Loteria Lunes, we did, like, a competition between the different age groups of students, where you had to come dressed as this, these certain cards, as in bingo, and then whoever dressed up the most, what grade level dressed up the most, won that day. And then we had Piñata Day, which was be colorful, show any color, be fun, basically. And then on Thursday of that week, we had Sí Se Puede Day, which is a big debate in the Hispanic Latino culture, where you come from parents who are immigrants, you try your best, because you know, at the end of the day, sí se puede. As long as you keep pushing, you keep going, and you get that diploma, you get your job, you do whatever you can, but at the end, se puede. And then on Friday, we had Vaquero Viernes, which was western style. It's very popular in Mexico with ranchos, farms, and we thought we'd like to represent that in a way for that week. And then we also started Mariachi Club, which is a new club this year, sponsored by Mr. Loeb and Mr. Baum, and student leader Angelina Figueroa. I am also part of the club, and I honestly love it, because I love my culture, and I feel like this is a good way to show, and then represent, and then teach those who possibly don't know a lot of, like, old, like, mariachi music, that we get to show that in a new version with our own twist within it to our community.
Yeah, I saw the video that was done. I think it featured primarily Dr. Freitas for the week, and it was fabulous.
Thank you.
And moving to athletics and activities for September, girls were runner-up in the Upstate Eight Conference and are headed to the Glenbard East Regionals this Thursday, September 28th. Boys golf had an undefeated conference season and are headed to Glenbrook North Regionals tomorrow, Wednesday, September 27th. Looking forward, this Friday, September 29th, we have our homecoming football game versus Thornton at 7:15 p.m. for varsity at the Kenley Athletic Complex. And as Student Association mentioned earlier, the 30th is our homecoming dance from 7:00 to 10:00 at the athletic complex. And I believe that concludes the student advisor's report.
Great. Thank you both. Any questions, comments from anyone? Okay, moving on. Good. Old business. I don't think we have anything specific to life safety, capital improvements, or sustainability, Dr. Freitas. Okay? So under new business, we have a submission of course fees. It's a first read.
First read, and Ms. Lundquist is here. She did correct the chart. If you want to come up, Kylie, go through your chart with the board, please.
My apologies for the flipping of increase and decrease on the chart, but it has been, it has been corrected. So what you see in the chart that I provided, there are 12 proposed changes to course fees for next year. The increases reflect things like the increase of registration in programs that courses may attend, competitions that they may compete in, things like ILMEA for music courses, some increase of the shirts that students wear in honors leaders training, and the addition of Apple exams to some of our lower-level language courses. When you look at the decreases to fees, we have, in all of those cases, in the rationale, what we're showing is what those course fees pay for. What's not included there is kind of what we dropped off to make those decreases happen, which are supplemental texts. So previously, prior to our new textbook series, we were using more supplemental texts to fill out the curriculum in those courses. We are no longer using those texts. We don't need those anymore, so we don't have the need to purchase some of those extra items. So that's why we were able to drop the course fees in those areas. So this is a pretty light year for course fee changes for next year. I think the only question was on the flip of that header. There are no, typically, at this time, I present course requests for new courses or course changes, and there are not any of those for this year, courses that would be coming tonight, would have had to have been proposed last February. So that's why on the memo for this report, I included the timeline at the bottoms, because I think it's helpful to see, and it's something that we've been working with division heads, too, to make sure that our teachers really understand the process and how this works, and what the timelines are. So this coming February, if there are courses that people would like to propose, that's when we will receive those in February of this school year. April, May is when we would do our leadership approval, and when I would bring it to the curriculum council for the members of the board to take a look at what those proposed changes might be. And then this time next year, I would be getting ready to put those, if approved by the board, into the curriculum guide for courses to be taken in the '25, '26 school year. So it's a two-school-year differential. When you propose something in the '23, '24 school year, you're looking at students being able to take that course one year out, so that '25, '26 school year.
You propose it in '23, '24. You course select it '24, '25.
Yep, and you take it '25, '26.
I was just laying it out there.
Yeah.
That's helpful to see it, I think, you know.
One thing I did do, just because it's something that I'm very excited about, and Kendra was here, this is something that Kendra has worked a lot with so far. While we don't have necessarily any new courses that are going into the curriculum guide, we do have, actually, going on this year, several new courses. I think enough is coming around for you, Mr. Noberg. We do have several new course offerings that are dual-credit. So I think it's just nice. I was updating the curriculum guide, and I'm trying to make sure that, what do you got, one?
No, I need one.
Okay. We're trying to make sure, we're trying to make sure that we're really communicative with our families, to make sure that they understand what dual-credit is, when a course they're signing up for is dual-credit. So I've gone through the curriculum guide and really made sure to kind of flag those opportunities, make sure we address things. I remember, Ms. Gasko, we talked at one point about making sure families know, you're, when you start a post-secondary transcript, it comes with you. So if you decide after your dual-credit starts that you don't want to take it anymore, and you drop out of it, now you have a W, a withdraw, on your post-secondary transcript, right? So we're trying to make sure that we over-communicate those things. But I thought this looked, this is, this is very impressive to me. This is very exciting to me. Last school year, students had six potential opportunities for dual-credit. Four of them were advanced placement, the courses that are in orange on this chart, and two of them were the RBTV courses that were newly dual-credit last year, that we actually found out after the school year had started, that COD was giving us retroactive dual-credit for any student that was involved in RBTV. The key there is that it's at any level. Intro to TV, dual-credit. Advanced TV, dual-credit. No matter what you do in RBTV, you have an opportunity to be earning college credit through College of DuPage. This year, so we had six last year, for this year, we had seven new opportunities, which is huge. They're all out of our applied arts department. So everything in purple is in our applied arts department. So Patty Sarkady and David Weisar really, really, really worked diligently through the second semester of last year, through the summer, through this fall, submitting transcripts, submitting work hours, and tweaking course descriptions and syllabi to really work in tandem with the folks at Triton College to give us dual-credit offerings in now 13 areas, as opposed to six the year before. So what I have in the curriculum guide, and what you can now see here, is a one-stop place where you can see, here's the high school course, this is what it lines to in the college, this is the college where you get the credit, this is how much it costs. The only one of our dual-credit opportunities that has a cost associated with it is the Loyola opportunity through those advanced placement courses. Loyola has not raised their fee for our dual-credit students since we started, so it remains $65 a credit hour for a student that's taking dual-credit through Loyola, and at Loyola, it's $788 a credit hour. So it's a 92% savings for our students that are going dual-credit that route. If they're going dual-credit RBTV or any of our courses through Triton, it's 100% savings, because they are not charging us additional monies for students to come. So I think it's just, we're, I'm going to keep, obviously, adding to this list. As Ms. Reska asked the question about culinary, we are, we have two applications in at Triton. Both of our culinary teachers have submitted their applications, and we are working with, what do we got to do to make this work? We have two of our wellness teachers who have submitted applications to have a couple of our wellness courses taught, potentially as dual-credit, and we have, we're trying a second try with one of our Spanish courses. So we have some things in the hopper right now that we are working on. September 30th is our deadline, so we're getting all of our ducks in a row in Triton, and especially the individuals from the Des Plaines Valley region have been really, really instrumental in helping us to get those dual-credit opportunities for students. The dual enrollment opportunities that I shared with you earlier are really exciting for us as well, especially the EMT and the fire science. I just think people are going to go crazy for those. We already have, Beth Augustine shared with me, that we already have one student who might be interested in the dual-degree program, which we heard a little bit more about at our DVR conference this year. The pilot program of that has four young ladies from Ridgewood who are graduating in May with their diploma from Ridgewood and an associate's degree from Triton. So that is kind of the next thing that we're working on, too. But I just wanted you, just because I didn't have any new courses, you know that I like to stay up here as long as I can and talk with you. So I just wanted you to see the really awesome work that we're doing by more than doubling our dual-credit opportunities in one year.
So just a quick, kind of logistics question. Is the idea in the curriculum guide to call us out as its own page?
Both.
Both.
So I was-
I think that's important, because I think otherwise they get lost. The curriculum guide is a meaty document, right?
Yes, yes. So what I've tried to do is put it in a bunch of different places. It's a standalone page, and then within each of the departments, anytime a course is dual-credit, I've banded it in yellow, and it says right there, students are eligible to take this course dual-credit, should they choose, with a variety of different ways that they should reach out, contact their counselor. So I've tried to thread it in so many places that you can't miss it.
Ms. Fletcher's sending out this flyer on the new, we're going to get that to her.
Yes, we are going to get that to her. I have not done that yet.
Social media.
It's also going to go, the dual enrollment flyer has that QR code on it, so that students can take a snap, and they can sign up right there, and then counselors know, this student is interested. We're following up. So in addition to Ms. Fletcher being able to blast that, we're going to have it hanging around the school in posters and flyers, so that we can really drum up that interest. Our goal is to maximize whatever seats, we don't know what that number is yet from Triton, but we want to maximize whatever opportunities they give us, so we want to garner that interest nice and early.
So we're going from three to six in dual enrollment.
Yep.
Three classes where they're taking that trip. Now there's going to be an opportunity for six next year.
Yep.
Yes.
Going from six-
To 13.
13.
With four kind of in the works for next year, potentially.
Possibly more than 13.
Yep.
Yes.
13 is this year.
13 is current, right now. Yep.
From six last year, 13 this year. One quick question. So, I mean, that's fantastic, and this has been growing, and we've been pushing for this for a long time. So definite growth and development. When you talk about goal number four and goal number one, like, maximizing curricular day, maximizing the budget to pay for kids to get credit. I think there's something important we need to make sure we highlight to parents. Kids that take these AP courses, they can get dual-credit even if they don't pass the AP exam, correct?
Correct.
So if they, if they pass the AP exam, are they getting dual-credit and additional college credit? Like, that's something we should probably clarify. Don't need to answer that tonight, because I know we offer more than four AP courses.
Correct.
These are AP courses that also get dual-credit.
Yes.
So if a kid takes an AP course, because they like computer science and want to try it, but they don't want to sit for the test, they could still earn dual-credit if they pass the class at Loyola by paying them.
And it helps if a student gets a three on the test, because I've had students take the statistical course.
Right. No, I'm saying that, but see, that's, what I'm saying is, that's how they get AP college board credit.
Right.
But they don't have to take the AP test, and they could still get Loyola University credit just for taking the class here.
So then that's the point to clarify.
They need to clarify on a couple of those.
That's a great question.
But where it helps, because sometimes here, where a parent takes, a student takes an AP course, and they assume they'll do well, certain colleges will only accept a five.
Correct.
But it's a Loyola, it's a Loyola transcript. So let's say you took the test, and you got a three in, you know, AP. You might not, you'd say, well, I'm not going to get college credit for it. You are, if you also signed up as a dual-credit.
Correct.
So that makes it very-
That's the way I was trying to say it.
Yeah, I understand. Yep.
It makes it for, and parents and students, you can't lose.
Right.
You know, they're, it's a nice option. And I was just going to ask one follow-up question to both of us. Do the parents understand that dual-credit is a little different than AP? You don't have to be, like- You don't have to be like top of the class or something to take these and still get college credit.
I can't necessarily say for sure they understand that. It's our goal to make sure that we communicate that appropriately so that people know there aren't barriers to any of these classes. You know, in terms of prerequisites or certain grade point average or anything like that, yes, that's our goal to make sure they understand.
I think you probably have a definition paper you define dual credit, dual enrollment, advanced placement.
Yeah.
I mean, that's somewhere in the curriculum guide, so there's nice, easy cheat sheet.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Would I be able to make a brief comment?
Yeah, please.
So I am in office age during one of my periods throughout the day, and we handed out slips for the informational meeting about all these new classes that have been introduced for this dual credit. And coming from AP Computer Science Principles where we were told what this dual credit opportunity is through Loyola, and then giving out these slips, some students were asking, well, I'm not taking an AP class, what is dual credit? I have had students that kind of looked at the slip like, huh? And then I explained it to them and they showed interest in that. So by, I feel increasing the awareness of the fact that we have these classes that are gaining this opportunity, as well as the fact that we have these classes that in the future will be gaining this opportunity, more students will gain interest in this and therefore we will have more students enrolled in this dual credit program.
Yeah, agree. Thank you.
The whole plan of the dual credit, continuing to increase this dual enrollment is for college and career pathways. It's good exposure to career pathway courses, right? They're earning dual credit, so even though it may not apply directly to their major, it can still apply to their general edge to help reduce college costs, cost of tuition towards parents, and parents will help with those costs. And like Kylie mentioned, the eventual goal is, you know, a kid could eventually get to a point to where they're graduating high school with a diploma and close to an associate's degree. You know, that's a huge, that pushes them a step ahead of their competition from other high schools.
Yeah, and it's not only college, because if you graduate high school with your CNA, you're working.
Right now, yep. You're working right now.
Or if you can get some certification in culinary, you can step into a hotel or whatever and you're working. So I think that's a huge help to come out of high school and be able to walk into something.
One more point of clarification before we let you go.
You wanted me to stay. It's okay.
You said earlier when Ms. Kegel was here, you're signing up eighty-five students for dual credit this week.
So it's interesting. So that's one of the challenges with the Triton madness and the dual credit. So our students obviously pick their courses very early. So a lot of the opportunities, some of the opportunities that have come down and we've gotten approval for happened after kids picked their courses, right? Like what happened with the retroactive COD with RBTV, because that process can be so back and forth. Those eighty-five students that Kendra and Patty Sarkady are pulling out tomorrow are students who are already registered for the RB course, right? And they are pulling them in to let them know, hey, this course is now dual credit. Here's what we need to do to register for that, right? And give them that opportunity to register. So we're still in, that doesn't surprise me, that feedback that there were some kids that were like, hang on a minute, what is, because some of them happened after they registered. Not every kid that signed up last year to take electronics technology knew that it was going to be dual credit, because we didn't know it was going to be dual credit until we got that approval, sort of like the blessing from Triton. So in some cases, and it may always be a little bit this way, in some places, we're playing catch-up with Triton because depending on culinary, for example, how long we go back and forth until we get the stamp of approval, that stamp might come after kids have signed up. So that's why now in the curriculum guide, we're trying to make sure that we very much make it very clear. And then Ms. Augustine does a really nice job. If we get something retroactive after the fact, we're sending notice home to families, we're letting them know this is what is happening and this is what this means, and then Kendra can come in when the kids are here and scoop them up and answer some of those questions and help them through the process.
And there's no cost?
No.
No cost.
Super exciting, because when you get into college, you have to take those twelve hours of humanities or something, and you're like, no, they're done, they're already done and paid for, so it's really a big help.
Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And if I could just add, you know, I do want to commend this board and our superintendent. You know, your goal directly aligns with the needs of our students and parent desires. So thank you very much to the board and our superintendent for really, you know, giving us a goal that's actionable and helping us expand our opportunities. So thank you to the board, our superintendent, and Ms. Gasko, who has been supporting some of our students right out at Triton through her career division, so thank you, Ms. Gasko.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to field trips, I think we have field trips from both the theater group as well as the ski and snowboard club.
Yes, they are not one club. They are two different clubs. Dr. Freitas, I sent you a couple of questions. There was just a question about-
And this is a first read, just want to confirm.
Correct, this is a first read, right, Dr. Freitas?
This is a first read.
Okay.
You had a question about, is there minimums? Are you concerned, is the ski club concerned about the December twenty-third trip?
Yes, I do have. So traditionally, the ski club, you know, they kind of program three trips. You know, the goal is to do them all, but at times they only do two out of three. The minimum is forty-seven, but some of the challenges they face, if there's no snow or it's too warm, right, there's no way they can go skiing. But so the minimum is forty-seven, and most of the time, you know, Mr. Schirmack and his co-chaperones are able to get, you know, those students. I have gone on a few of those myself and they're great, but you know, our goal is to aim for three, to do them all, you know, but at times, you know, the weather doesn't cooperate, so there have been some cancellations, but the minimum's forty-seven.
And you're not concerned about it being the day before Christmas?
No, no, no. Traditionally, the first trip has always been between the twenty-first and the twenty-third, right around the Christmas Eve, you know, so that's not really different from previous trips.
Right after finals, go and break a leg?
Yeah, don't please, no.
That was a joke.
So, I mean, are there any other significantly dependent on board approval tonight, or can we go two weeks in improvement?
Oh, no, no, we can wait. Yeah, the trips are not to January and then December, so there's just plenty of time.
Were there any other questions on the specific trips?
Those are the ones that were submitted.
Okay, so we'll just make sure it's clear in two weeks if these are distinct approvals. Any visitor statements? I'm not seeing any here this evening. We had no discussion items requested. Any consideration of items for future meetings from anyone?
Yeah, I have two. So one, there is an October Illinois Association School Board event. I will get the details to Dr. Skinkis for the Friday update. So there's still trying, I don't know who all the speakers are yet, so hopefully we'll know that.
Do they have a date? Have they pinned down a date?
I don't have that for you either, so I'm hoping to have that for the Friday update. And the one, the other one I'd like to put out there for discussion, and whenever, last year we were talking about our foreign language. I don't know if we've moved ahead in that or we have some new plans, because we have Spanish now, and I think we have-
And French.
Maybe one, one, French. We used to have German, we used to have more years ago. Are we thinking expanding that? Do we have different options to working with online universe, whatever? I don't know if that's part of the conversation, yeah, so.
Question, well, obviously the curriculum person just left, so that would be a question that we can maybe ask. The ministers are scheduled to come October tenth to give their annual update on performance benchmarks for the high school. So maybe I can, Dr. Freitas can conclude that. But remember, we did talk about this a little bit with the board. There is not really an opportunity to expand those curricular offerings in the building unless we find Pedro that are dual certified. So we would have to find a need or post something with somebody that's dual certified so that they're not only a German teacher, but maybe they teach history, or because there won't be enough sections to offer a full-time German job or a full-time, or we're starting to see it with French, or we see with music, right? As you start to increase dual credit, dual enrollment, there's less, there's only seven periods for a kid to pick.
Right, and so part of what we threw out about six months ago, are others, well, I'm sure other schools have the same dilemma, are there online accredited courses that, you know, we could tap into or something?
We already offer that. It's a part of our curriculum guide and board pub.
Foreign languages.
Kids can take those online courses and get foreign language credit here. So that's already, that's already being offered.
So I think, and I don't need to know this next month, but you know, as a school that's competitive and looking for college, still kind of interested in our foreign language program and what we're offering, how we're talking about it. And that could be three months down the road, but I just want to put it out there.
Yeah, I like the idea of incorporating it into that next update from-
Yeah, it could be a couple months, right. Just put it on the list, you know, what do we see in that vein? Because I think it's going to be a two-year requirement coming.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, so-
Twenty-twenty-eight.
How can we be ready for that? And you know, any novel thoughts? Yeah.
Any other topics for future consideration from anyone? Looking, looking. Okay. I think we can move on to matters for closed session. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. We have a motion, please.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Edendu packet.
Second.
A second from Mr. Vinhorst. And when you need a roll call, please.
Mr. Durkman?
Yes.
Ms. Gail?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.